So we are here for a work session from a presentation from the sheriff's office on a jail update, and I will hand it over to Sheriff Atkins and Chief Bishop.
This is Sheriff Atkins, shout out to most of you. A thank you for everybody taking the time to come together. We have a brief presentation to give you in regards to a problem that most of you are fully aware of that revolves around the capacity of the jail and social distancing, et cetera. So we have some, well, some options, maybe I could say, but certainly we won't get into much conversation here until after Rick's done his presentation, and then we'll answer questions, and then there'll be some follow-up that I'll have as well in regards to how we move forward and so on. So again, thank you, everybody. I hope you had a great Thanksgiving, and hopefully we'll have a good conversation here today. Rick?
Thank you, Sheriff. First of all, good morning to everybody, and thank you for taking the time to meet with us on this update today regarding the jail. This morning, we're presenting regarding the COVID-19, managing COVID-19 into jail. This will be a short briefing followed by a long period for discussion and questions. So if we can kind of hold the questions till the end, that would be certainly appreciated. With that, next slide, please. Our agenda is pretty straightforward. We'll give a little background, initial results of our population management, population overview and updates, some driving factors, some unanticipated consequences of our population reduction and COVID-19 management strategies, some potential resources and options, and then discussions. Next slide, please. As you, most of you know, in March of 2020, members of the criminal justice community met to address COVID-19. This is because the sheriff has no authority to release someone from the jail. That takes a court order signed by a judge and argued or discussed by attorneys. We had, we were facing COVID-19 and reducing the population. So members of the criminal justice community met and discussed short-term potential policies and remedies to reduce the population. Next slide. The goal to reduce the population was more successful than we anticipated. The population dropped to 313 in March of 2020. I personally have not seen that since 1985. In addition, members of the criminal justice community updated our strategies to limit intakes to only the most serious offenders, and then updated release strategies with the courts and the prosecutor's office to release people who had an acceptable risk. The overall was a dramatic reduction of inmate population. Next slide, please. When the population began to increase in May of 2020, the sheriff asked for a snapshot. First of all, we were looking to see why our population was looking as an increase, and we attributed it to the reduced operation of the courts that was spelled out by the Washington Supreme Court. At the same time, the sheriff asked us to measure the jail itself and the cell areas and determine how many beds we could accommodate using social distancing. The number was 516. Those of you who have sat through my presentations before or CFAC will remember that a jail may have a number of beds, but we have an operational capacity because we have to separate people initially by gender. Then we separate by vulnerable inmates versus predatory inmates. Then we separate by special needs, and all those separations reduce the number of available beds. And that's what we call a peaking factor or classification factor. In this case, using the standard, industry standard of 20% of 516 beds, we have about 413 beds routinely we can use. 61 of those beds are dedicated to intake or cohort housing. And that means when someone comes in, we separate them from general population by arrest date, and then six to seven days after they've been in our jail and they haven't been released, they are then, as they're being monitored by medical, they are then released to general population if they don't have COVID symptoms. And we'll discuss some changes we've made later. When we took this snapshot in May, our population had increased, 93% felons with 75% pre-trial. This was in comparison to 385 inmates, excuse me, 671 inmates in 2018 on the same date, compared to 385 with 76% felons compared to 93% and 56% pre-trial with 19.5% mixed with one sentence charge and then maybe another pre-trial after that. Again, our population is growing because of the reduction in the court operation. And our pre-trial population is growing because most of the sentenced people were let out, and only those awaiting trial were kept. Next slide, please. For this briefing, the sheriff asked for another snapshot. And you will see now that our felony population, while our bed stayed the same, our felony population had fallen to 91% with a pre-trial population of 71%. We attribute this to the limited operation of the courts, which has now again been suspended until January of 2021. Next slide. You will see on this slide that the overall population of 2020 compared to 2019 has a dramatic drop. In March, you can see the population drop down to the 300s and then have a steady increase through October with a slight dip in November. If this was a typical year, I would be able to tell you that this is a seasonal anticipation, or we see this seasonally, that our population goes up in the fall, and then as we go into the holiday season, it starts to drop. This is not a typical year, and I am not comfortable saying what may or may not occur during the rest of the holidays and then going into 2021. But if it were a typical year, we would see the population continue to fall, and then in the first of the year, take a rise back up as we seasonally go back up into the spring. Now, for the person operating the slides, I'm going to ask you to go to slide 10. Thank. One slide back, please. There are two factors that drive an inmate population. It seems obvious there's more people, but there's actually two factors in there that drives the population. One is the number of people that come in, and the second is length of stay. This slide shows our rapid reduction in the number of people coming into the jail as of March of 2020 compared to 2019. You will see then, it's a gradual increase, but in our world, this is pretty much a static-looking number. These numbers aren't changing much, and then in November, they start to take their seasonal drop. That begs the question, if the number of people coming in the door is basically the same, why is the population going up? Read this slide now, please. And that's attributed to length of stay. Historically, the length of stay in the jail has been 16 to 17 days. However, you'll see in 2020 that it rapidly climbs and almost doubles at over 36 days in November. We attribute this to people waiting for trial in the jail because of the limited operation of the courts at the direction of the Washington Supreme Court. Next two slides now, please. Thank you. Some of the unanticipated consequences of our shutting down the population as well as limiting the number of people coming into the jail, professional visitors, is that the replacement fire system and replacement security system that you folks authorize and we are deeply appreciative for has been delayed. Initially, it was because we weren't letting people into the jail, but the contractors are from Canada, and they couldn't get across the border. They have recently gained admission to the United States, and the system is now being implemented. Our final two areas of bunk replacement has been delayed. Our medication-assisted treatment for opioid disorder has gone down to minimal services because we don't conduct group meetings, and we don't conduct the counseling in groups because of COVID-19. Our re-entry services have the same issues and the same restrictions, and our food and laundry services are struggling to keep up with the needs of our jails. That's primarily because the people who are usually serving time, who are low-level offenders, aren't here. We've released everybody, or we're not accepting them, and we're struggling to meet these services. But I want to draw your attention to the final bullet point. And that's the damage to the facility and prison environment. Prisons and jails approach their incarceration services differently. Jails measure length of stay in hours, days, weeks, and months. Prisons, on the other hand, measure their length of stay in months, years, and decades. As a result, our services are meant for a very short time, a short time someone serves time in the jail or stays in the jail. We don't have the robust services, reception services, classification, vocation, recreation, and other programs that prisons have. As a result, we have a long-term population, and as of today, I have 54 people who have been in the jail a year or longer waiting for trial. These people are locked in their cells because they're having to limit their out-of-cell time so they don't mix with other people because of COVID. And the services that we have just aren't the same robust, long-term services of prison. We have increased the number of books. We've increased the number of games and looking at other strategies to give folks things to do while they're waiting trial. But this is a serious issue, and as a result, we've had more disturbances in this last year than we've had in years past. And we've had two breaches of our windows in our medium-security areas in an attempt to introduce contraband or drugs. Next slide. Resources and options. Next slide. Some good news in all of this is that our, we still have potential steps to reduce population. We have yet to implement with our partners Class C and Class C felony bail. Expansion of the electronic home confinement through the courts is still pending. We're still pending voluntary waivers of extradition for people waiting to go to other states. We have asked to defer, and we can continue to defer misdemeanor mandatory sentencing, and we've been looking at out-of-custody work crews for alternatives to incarceration. It helps with our food and laundry services, and that is still pending. Next slide. And before we move on to your options, earlier this week, the board and the county manager's office, as well as the sheriff and myself, received a letter from several advocacy groups, including but not limited to Disability Rights Washington and the ACLU. They presented a number of options, including the ones I just presented, both from their own research as well as research that they looked into from the Correctional Facility Advisory Commission or CFAC from their reports starting in 2018 and ending in 2019. And there are several options for your consideration there as well. The first option is you can do nothing. We can wait to see if a potential vaccine arrives. I've been told to, by the health department, even if one does start, that I should be planning to continue the operation I have for COVID-19 mitigations to at least late spring, early summer. The disadvantages is eventually we will run out of room in our general population. We will not be able to continue our COVID-19 mitigations because the population will become denser. We will not be able to do social distancing, and eventually, there'll be a litigation. Next option. We can reopen the JWC to full services. The advantages, offenders will continue to be placed in jail for community safety, and we can still wait for a vaccine. The JWC, however, and the disadvantages is not have the physical plant for a higher risk inmate. There's a potential for escape, potential for violence, and potential for introduction to contraband. We would have to increase the number of FTEs to FTEs over and above our current allotment, and we have insufficiently trained staff. If you asked us to do this right away, we would have to use mandatory overtime. But I want you to put a bookmark in this option because you did ask me to do some work, and I have, I want to come back to this. Next slide. We could rent beds. In October of this year, I put out a message to all jail managers in the state asking for bed rental rates and numbers. Two jails in the entire state answered. Cuckoo Tatt and Skamania, for a total of 15 beds in the state of Washington available to be rented. If we were to rent 15 beds, the cost would be $37,000 a month in a 31-day month. It would only take our healthy, low-risk inmates. We would have to make accommodations for pre-trial inmates to access the court and attorneys, and this may result in us not having enough workers for our kitchen and laundry services. Next slide. If that were the case, we have looked into temporary workers, and the bottom-line monthly cost for hiring eight temporary workers to supplement our current kitchen workers would be $52,000 a month. Next slide. We have immediate requests to replace all of our medium-security windows with high-security double-pane windows at $90,000. However, as you saw earlier, we have a list of life safety projects, and this would have to be prioritized among those. I would highly recommend that we finish the fire and security systems before we make this kind of a project on our list. The second is to update our intake units, our medium-security intake units and maximum security with glass barriers and closing food ports so that we have, we limit the spread of COVID-19. This would be into all of our areas and would be, it would allow us to have inmates walk past tiers without that potential spread. And if rental beds became necessary to authorize the funding I just described. Lastly, I would ask that the JWC be made the first priority in the capital campus planning project that starts next year. Next slide. I want to draw your attention to bullet point number two. You asked us to look for options, and there is one medium-security facility that is currently underused in Clark County, and that is our juvenile facility. Juvenile administration allowed me to walk through there. I did walk through there. Their physical plant could be readily used by the main jail. However, due to restrictions of sight and sound, we cannot have concurrent use of the empty spaces. We'd have to either have juveniles or adults. To figure out what we would do, I asked the juvenile administration to walk through the JWC as well as the Crisis Triage Center to get an idea of their construction and costs and whether or not the JWC would meet their needs. The construction used by the Crisis Triage Center, which was in the millions and took more than 18 months to complete, meets neither of our needs. However, with planning and study, the JWC may meet the needs of the juvenile system, but I would have to defer them to them for their needs. And during the discussion, you can, we can bring them online to discuss that. And finally, I would ask you to look at the CFAC recommendations on the main jail limitations and the physical plant limitations of the JWC, and give us guidance on what we need to do next to address the population. Next slide. And actually, I actually skipped a slide, so that's, that was our request to develop the options and help us address our current population. Next slide. That concludes, and we're open for discussion.
Questions from the council?
Mr. Chair?
Jeff, go ahead.
I see that Christine Semeney is on the call, and I'm wondering if, I don't want to put you on the spot, but I'm going to. But maybe you could speak a little bit about your walkthrough of the JWC and some of your thoughts around this?
Thank you, Councilor. Yes, we did the walkthrough about a week and a half ago. The biggest issue for us, well, three main things I would identify is that we would need to convert to single-room occupancy. That's a best practice for juvenile setting. Right now, it's a dormitory. So as Chief Bishop mentioned, it would be millions to build out those walls and to set that up. The other issue is that in juvenile, we're required to offer school. There's no classroom, so we would have to look at building out a classroom area. There is space for it, but there will be a cost. And then the other one is the cost for staffing. It would be an increase in staffing for us primarily because our courtrooms are still here downtown. And so we do not have to transport right now. We have a secure hallway to our courtroom here in the building. So we would have to increase our day shift staffing to at least two staff each morning to help transport. And so we're looking at an additional eight to 10 staff, which would be, you know, $800,000 to $1 million just in staffing alone a year. So those would be, that is if you did a down-and-dirty transition. And then if the plan was to do that temporarily and then bring us back, we would have to look at, you know, the transition back into the building as well and what that would look like.
Thank you.
Can we go back up to slide 17, the immediate requests, please? Have we looked at specifically on, I guess, the first two as well as the rental beds, the fourth option there? If there would be eligibility for CARES Act dollars for those and where our balance is for those funds?
If you're addressing that to me, we did attempt to do this under CARES Act. As I said, we would not be able to prioritize this above the fire system. So my understanding was CARES Act ran out as of November 30th or December 31st, and so neither of these could have been done. We looked at these early in the fall, late in the summer. And unfortunately, we're just an unwheely building that is difficult to get things done quickly. If there's another route, or if there's another way to do it, fund these things, be happy to look at it.
Mr. Chair, can we go up to slide 12? So potential steps to reduce population here. None of these have been implemented, if I'm understanding what you were saying earlier. And then if not, what's the process of looking at some of these options here? Where's the group on that?
So this is with the prosecutor's office and the courts. It is still pending. They both have given me updates that they're still working on it. So it's, it's bad news that it hasn't been implemented, but it's good news that we, our population is starting to fall through our our usual seasonal reduction. And we have those out there, and we will continue to ask them their status. But that is, these are with the courts and with the prosecutor's office.
I mean, it seems to me there are some opportunities here, and I don't see that Judge Collier's on the, with us today. But, you know, we just saw that trials are now postponed again through January 10th. I'm just wondering, again, he's not here to respond to this, but why, there isn't some way for us to manage trials? We, I know we're doing a lot with regard to social distancing and all the processes and parameters, but it's just hard for me to think that we can't conduct trials in some way if I believe other jurisdictions are, are, are. So if we can, then maybe they're not, maybe I'm wrong. They're not, okay.
Just last week, Council, of all the large counties in the state have shut down jury trials on the criminal and civil side.
Okay, thank you for that correction. So that's the frustration is, you know, Chief Bishop, the idea that we have 54 people in jail waiting more than a year for trial. I mean, I, I don't know. So I guess my thoughts would be to try to do everything we can within our power to reduce this population in the short term. Then the idea that it's $800 to $1 million to think about staffing the juvenile or the work center for juvenile, that's a bit of a nut to think about managing, so.
And Counselor, if I may, there are occasionally people who postpone their own trials. So I don't want to put that all on the court and the prosecutor's office. I do have people who do postpone their trials, but this is a large number compared to our historical.
Thank you.
So if we go back down to 17, thank you, Counselors, for bringing us back here. That was, I meant to come back here as well. County manager, have we looked at, are there other things outside the general fund that could potentially address any of these funding requests?
Yes, the Otter's Office, I believe, has been in contact with the sheriff's office. I may be misspoken, but we have received some reimbursements and expect to continue to receive some for the CARES Act that we may be able to then reallocate some other funds to offset some of those costs. I mean, the windows, $90,000 for the windows, we should have done that immediately. And I haven't been privy to all those conversations, but I do believe that there is funding. And if the Otter's Office has not been having those conversations with the sheriff's office, I will make sure that that happens immediately.
Excellent.
Thank you. If I may, thank you there. We have talked with General Services, and we were just, because of the requirements of the jail and timing, I don't want anyone to think that people have been unresponsive to us. It's just we're a large building that it takes time to get things through us.
And then can we go down one slide, please? What are the immediate steps that would be needed to, so maybe it's in the slide, to get the work center available to use as a pressure-release valve for some of this? Are there, are there short-term steps that we could be, start, that we could start now to be ready to be able to do that in 16 to 90 days?
We would need to, sorry. We would need to bring in somebody to evaluate our needs. I can do it, but staffing, but even then, I'm out seven months. And I can evaluate my expertise, security levels, but I can't design them. So we're talking about an architect and bringing someone in like that. That's why I was suggesting you have the capital plan starting in January. Maybe that's the place to start with that funding and move quickly and get that done so we can be ready to go.
Counselor Blum, this is Kathleen, if I could ask a quick question?
Yes, of course.
Chief Bishop, with regards to a shorter-term, not solution, but something to assist us, because as you said, getting through this capital project can take a while, are there options for temporary structures that could house this population?
I have not done research into temporary structures, nor have I seen in the last five years in my travels, temporary structures like that that you're discussing. We have the structure, the JWC. The problem is that the, you're talking about a risk, inmate higher risk with a 93%, 91% population of felons for escape and then for violence among the population. So we would have to answer that with staffing. If we didn't use physical barriers, it's staffing.
But to your point, with regard to physical barriers and architecture, I mean, those things can be designed, right?
Yes, we just have to get professionals to do that quickly. Yes, we just have to get professionals to do that quickly. And then we have to staff it.
Rick, and just to check here, correct me if I'm wrong, but the option of us going down there and the sheer amount of work it would take to make that building secured enough to house felons in, and the staffing, would far exceed that of what it would cost for juvenile to be housed there with their limited increase in staffing as well.
If I could interject.
Please, Christine.
We would not be able, I mean, we have a low population today. We have nine youth, but we would not be able to put them in a bus and take them down there today. There are no single-cell rooms built. It's, it's a large dormitory. We run a two-pod system right now. We don't have any girls, but we do usually have one or two. So the co-ed situation, if we had to lose those dorms, we too would have to increase our, our staffing levels for the supervision side. When I spoke earlier, I was only speaking to the court transportation staffing, but we would have to actually increase on-the-floor staffing as well. So part of, it's kind of a, the conundrum here is both options would require construction. You have the timing issue that also comes into play, not just the cost issue. Obviously, the cost issue would be the larger concern, but I'm concerned by the time we made these changes, we may be out of this or moving in a direction where it's not a concern.
Yeah, Christine, you, you just touched on the point I was going to make, that I look at these longer-term options. If we're talking six to nine months to do the study and start ramping up staffing, by that time, we should be six months into having a vaccine. And so I guess I'm, I'm really looking for what are the short-term things that can be done in 60 to 90 days? And I guess I'm looking to Rick, you, and the sheriff as to, what, what are you specifically asking us that we can do in the next 30 to 60 days, or 60 to 90 days to address this issue? It's obviously a serious issue, but I'm unclear as to what's actually being asked that could be done in a timely manner while it needs to be done.
That is the conundrum, where when we spoke earlier this year, we were looking at rental beds, that is literally dried up in the county, the state. The short-term steps are to authorize, or at least put the money aside for the, for us to release more. Of course, we can't release them to ask, for the court to look at that and prosecutor's office. And then we would have to use temporary staffing to continue our food and laundry services to get us over that hump through the spring. That's if we need that. And then, of course, we would also be looking to those other options that were pointed out by DRW, as well as what the prosecutor's office may or may not be able to do. But when we did, well, I can't, I don't want to, all that, Mr. Golick needs to speak to what his shop can or cannot do. We just cannot release anybody without the, the help of the court or the PA's office, and we are holding a fairly serious population.
Are there ways that the council can assist in facilitating those discussions, Chuck, between yourself and Tony?
Well, absolutely, and I think with the assistance of the county manager, you know, I want to fall back onto CFAC here, and the planning that we all went through for a very long period of time with the recommendations. And now we have the perfect storm of a pandemic hitting on top of an already burdening issue, and even our short-term fixes right now will become a long-term if we don't move forward with some plan to upgrade the facilities as recommended by CFAC. And so, I mean, we're at a, we're at a critical point now where decisions have to be made. And we're, at the sheriff's office, we're wide open to have those discussions with some input from the county level with the other electeds to move forward on what that looks like. And some, I mean, when you're looking at this jail and any of you that have done a walkthrough here, you know what the construction is like, and if you've been to the jail work center, you know what that construction is like. It's like a beefed-up dormitory is all it is. And so it would require a lot of work, even if we had the money and the staff ready to go to work immediately on it before you could make it feasible in terms of putting any felons down there whatsoever. So, yeah, I'm open to those conversations and willing to do it. And as Rick pointed out earlier, we probably would have taken some of these actions, but they're out of our bailiwick. This isn't a decision that we make, and we just implement those decisions, invest how to operate them within our, you know, confines. So we're totally open to that.
So I would like to ask the county manager to try and organize a meeting with the prosecutor attorney and the sheriff to talk about these issues, hopefully before next Wednesday at council time, as one action step to look at how can we address the population. Also, by next Wednesday, look at what funding options, not just CARES, but are there any savings in REIT or other funds that we could look at for the windows and the intake units? Maybe specifically CARES Act money for rental beds? And Rick, if you can get an update on if there are any beds available, we can just discuss as a council time with the goal of making action at that point. I don't, I don't feel like we have enough to make a firm decision now, but I think those would be good follow-ups that we could do in the next week. Other counselors, anything we want to see, so we can take some, I think we need to take action on this quickly. Anything else that we need to see before we can do that next week?
I would also recommend to have the courts be present in that conversation, as they're also a key partner in that decision-making.
I was going to say the same thing.
Yeah, and I, and I do understand that, I believe, a lot of these stakeholders have been having ongoing conversations, maybe not necessarily with this specifically as their only topic, but courts in general. So this, and then I will certainly coordinate, have a conversation, and like I said, I'm pretty confident we have funding to support some of the immediate needs, like the windows and other items that the chief has mentioned today. We do have funding for that, but I will certainly make sure that we have that solidified, and all of those parties will be invited to council time next week as well.
Yeah, I totally agree on the addition of the courts. Let's also add, at least invite either Josh and/or Annika, because I think this may be something we want to put on legislative priority. I mean, a lot of this is driven by dictates coming down from the state in terms of what we can and can't do in terms of trial. And so these are, and understandably so, but these are costs that are being incurred because of state decisions. And so I think it gives us a case to be looking at either releasing some of the CARES money that they're holding or funding for helping out with some of these issues. So maybe including them so they can get the speed on it if, if they're available at that time.
Yes, absolutely. And one, one other item that I would mention, and I know both the sheriff and Chief Bishop mentioned, mentioned this as well, but as we look at the short-term fixes, I think it is wise to have the long-term solutions solidified at the same time so that we're not inadvertently spending a lot of money in the next couple of months to get, and then we're going to spend a lot more money to go to the long-term solution. So the long-term solution could become more short-term and have a strategic action that way. I think that would be important.
Excellent.
And I might, I could throw in one other thing here that comes to mind for me. As the courts open, this problem that we currently have is only going to get worse. And the courts are eventually going to have to open up and start doing the business that needs to be done, and they're going to be bottlenecked something tremendously, and it, and it's going to cause our intake to go up. And so just keep that in mind as well. And in terms of the letter that you received and we all received, we need to take that seriously, and we need to look at their options and see who's responsible for those. We've talked about this in the past, that we've had a good working relationship with all of the agencies that combined to send that letter, but they were just waiting to see if we were going to make actions through CFAC to do something. And I think this was a very kind letter, as well, basically putting us on notice that some steps need to be taken. I'm not sure if they're waiting for a reply from the council or the county manager as well, speaking to their assertions.
I think it'd be important to make them aware of what the next steps are. Counselor Lance, do you have a comment?
Yes, I, I really appreciate this conversation and the, and the situation that you find yourselves in, and accordingly that we find ourselves in, and I appreciate you bringing this, and, and that letter is important, and we do need to take it seriously. And I, I support the direction that's, that's being suggested of weighing long-term while we talk about short-term. I think we should advance the funding that we can for those immediate solutions as quickly as we can. I also definitely think that we need to talk with courts and PA's office about these pending ways to reduce the population. I mean, if we're looking for something that can be done in, in 30 to 90 days, that's where a real impact can be made. And if we're being asked to make decisions that are funding-related, we need to hear from all parties so that we fully understand. I, I'm very interested in knowing what it will take to take these from pending to actual solutions. And so I look forward to that meeting and, and hearing more. Thank you.
Thank you, Counselor Lance, for that. And I would suggest that everybody take a few moments, as, as big as the report is, is refresh yourself with CFAC and the process that we went through, and the recommendations were made as part of that long-term process, so that we don't lose track of where all the efforts and cost and time that we put into that CFAC council for 18 months to come up with those moving forward recommendations. And it isn't going to be fun reading, but I think it's pretty necessary.
Wait a second, it was fun reading.
Well, maybe for you, Rick.
Any other comments from the council or from the sheriff's office?
No, I, thank you for hearing us out and making the right moves right now that will move this forward in one fashion or another.
And thank you for the presentation and bringing this to us, so look forward to continuing to work on it. With that, I think we are wrapping up the work session and rolling straight into council time.
I would give us two minutes so that we can stop CVTV and then start, oh, no, this is not on CVTV. So yes, you can go ahead and move forward. Thank you.
Okay. Do people need a two-minute break? Are we good? It's a pretty short agenda.